I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all. All right, I call this meeting, Gerald Baker, County Commissioner Matthews, President, Charles McInnes, Matthew Morris. First order of events is approved amendments of the regular session Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on May 21st, 2015, 15 at 6:00 PM. Further discussion, all those in favor please say aye. Next, we have approved amendments of the emergency meeting of the Lincoln County Commission that was held on May 26th, 2015 at 10:00 AM. Before we get into public comment, I need to address something on new business. In our new business section, I need to fix something that I overlooked. There is, says to approve and reappoint Michael Ferlante. This should be to advertise for the position. Okay, so let's make that correction. I want to make that correction now. And this will be to advertise the position at the Lincoln PSD. All right? All right, so let's go ahead and make that correction now. And we'll take applications for that. All right, next we have public comment.
You want the list?
Yeah. Well, I'd say just-
I think it's the red one.
That's all right, just go ahead and-
Okay. I'm Steve Stur with Appalachian Power. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. Couple of things I want to talk to you, I know you've got a busy agenda tonight. One is a mobile alert system that we are rolling out for our customers. We're encouraging all our customers to go to appalachianpower.com and sign up for this service. That way, anytime there's a power outage that is a result, your account is affected by, you'll either get a text message or an email, whatever you wish for, and give you updates on that outage as time goes on. And I think that will help all our customers, when there is an outage, be more informed on what's going on so they can make better preparations. Second of all, I want to talk to you just briefly about the five plant closings that we had last weekend. Those were a result of the MATS rule, Mercury Rule, that they've been working on, EPA's been working on for about the last 19 years. The plants that were closed were all 1950's vintage plants. Those were working until last weekend, we were using those plants, but as a result of this rule and being compliant, we were forced to close those plants. The good news in that is, we were able to purchase coal-fired generation from our sister company, Ohio Power, that was sited here in West Virginia. One plant is, we bought 50% of Mitchell Plant, which is in Marshall County, up near Wheeling, and we bought the remainder, two-thirds of Unit 3, which is at the Amos Plant in Charleston. And those are coal-fired plants, fully scrubbed, fully compliant, and those with the addition of the gas-fired Dresson Plant, which is located in Dresson, Ohio, will be able to meet the needs of our customers for the future, and hopefully for a long time. So, just wanted to give you an update on that. Some people think it was a result of the carbon rule that EPA is looking at now, but these were a result of the Mercury Rule. Those plants, like, they were so old, like I said, built in the 50's. To build scrubbers, to put scrubbers on those plants would have been hundreds of millions of dollars, and they weren't going to run long enough to actually recover those costs and it would have been a burden to our customers. So, we've tried to do what was best for the customers and go the most economical route. Any questions? If you have some, you have my contact information, take A's, that'll get ahold of me, and I encourage you to do so.
I appreciate it, thanks for coming. Next, I see Avril McLuer in the audience, and I think I've already talked to him today. So, why don't you come on up and address?
I'm here for water, water, Laurel Ford. I can give you a copy. I went around, we got 41 signatures. We, first of all, thank y'all for letting me speak tonight. And we add the water because we got water on each end of us, and when they get out of their land mess, they're not going to come back and give us water. And we don't have nothing to water for. We don't have a bus run, we don't have cable TV, we don't have sewer, we don't have water, we don't have nothing with our tackle, they went down. They went way up. So, if I'd have knew in time, we'd just start this Monday, I could have had a lot of supporters here, I just got a couple right now, but thank you for hearing us, and they deep water, they did a lot of gas wells, drilled two on May, and they really, the wells are terrible. These people hauling water in and carrying, everybody's got a water connection. They're spinning the ports and all.
I talked to Doc earlier, whenever, you know, I saw you today, we talked. But I was talking to Doc, he came in and talking about this issue, and one of the things that he suggested, and I think we were talking about, was taking this to Region 2, which is, are the people who help get money, and they're basically doing the drawdowns for the project that's going on right now, and talking to the Lincoln PSD. And generally speaking, there's some underrun money. A lot of times that something's bid out for a million dollars, they may only use $600,000, so you may have a little bit of money left, and seeing if maybe we can ask them to start that project with that money.
If our water would come down behind us, you know yourself, it's the top of the hill now. We're down a little ways, you wouldn't even need a tank.
Avril, how far is it?
Space, about three, three and a half miles.
Because what we've done in other projects is we have these monies come in, as President said, you know, sometimes we'll run, and a lot of times you'll run with extra monies at the end, and what we try to do is make them aware of projects that if they have extra monies, that we'd like to see them do. And that's what we'll do with this at our next meeting, where we can make a motion on it and stuff. We'll get this sent to Region 2 and make sure that the people that designed the project that's what we're working on now have this, so they can be looking at this as a place to put, if we do have monies left, to put it into this there.
What if you don't have money?
Well, we look wherever we can, you know, so we find that these projects usually have some monies left, and because they're already there, it's a lot cheaper to do those projects while they're already in there working than we'd be trying to come back and do.
Yeah, they're there working now.
Yeah. And so, that's, and as we come through with these drawdowns, once they start getting drawdowns from us over there, you'll have a better idea, or the engineers have a better idea, how much money it's costing and things like that, so we can actually see if we might have monies left in that or not. But there are the other funding sources we go to, the ARC, and the other places to try to get monies for that. But if you, when you've got a project going, it's always, it seems to me like it's always a lot easier to get them to take care of while they're in there.
We appreciate y'all's help, we're going to do it.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for hearing us.
Hello, do you have any, go ahead. Thank you to the commissioners, the president. Congressman Jenkins is district director and deputy chief of staff, and just here to introduce myself, Michael Chirico, I'm out of Huntington, and our office is here to help with any water infrastructure projects you might have, working with Region 2. I know that the Ottington County has been hurt, we do work hand to hand with Region 2, so I'll come follow up with you afterwards, but I know it's been hit hard with the disaster, FEMA, with the recent flooding. Anything you have, constituent services, social security, veteran issues, our office stands ready to help, and I thank the commission for having Chad last time, but if there's anything we can do in terms of coordination, I'm his eyes, ears, and voice on the ground. Please, from Huntington, anything I can do, I stand here to help. So, I thank you all very much.
Well, that's something that, water project right here, and we're looking for carriers for our, we have two self-inlet towers that are being wrapped, and we're trying to get some help with ATT Verizon, trying to look in on those towers.
We have heard from numerous of your constituents, you know, broadband infrastructure with Armstrong, it is on my radar, I know it's on Senator Capito's radar, as well as Senator Manchin's radar. Working water infrastructure is another big thing we're hearing in Lincoln County as well, but, you know, I have Verizon, and I got service right when I got up here, but right before, I was clear sailing with no service from here to Salt Rock. So, we hear you, we recognize it, and we've tried to be a mainstay at these meetings to hear more and to listen to more of what's going on, and we have a good delegation and a tight-knit group, and I really, I look forward to working with you to see what we can do.
I'll be calling.
Please do.
What we want to do on this project, with Mr. Furball, that we'll copy you guys on what we're doing with that. That way, you all will be able, I'm sure he'll help you too, but at least whatever correspondence we have about it, we'll make sure of-
We did a letter of support to Lower Mud River, and I know we had gotten correspondence back from the governor, I think we forwarded it on to you.
We really appreciate you guys.
If there's any other projects, letters of support, anything that we can kind of be instrumental in to help you all advocate specific USDA 340 money as well, let us know too.
Appreciate it.
Good deal, thank you.
Rick, do you, you have anything to say to that?
I have, I believe I have been led to talk about-
No, I was just, I was just wondering, I didn't check. John Smith.
Mr. Matthews, President. I'll see you later, President. I got most of my questions answered. As you know, in the most rural area of Lincoln County, the Mud River, Upper Mud is probably the most rural area in the county without a doubt, because the houses are so far apart. But we would like water also. I've had some folks contact me and ask me what we needed to do, and I said I have no clue, but I know some folks down at the courthouse that might know. Now, I guess my question is, and I don't understand this public comment, I don't have a comment, y'all done a great job, but my question is, what do I need to do? Do I need to get a petition and bring you a volume three and four of names off of Mud River? The line stops at the top of Johnson Hill, and it's, and it stops at Purlockville Church. I understand they're up there now, working at Purlockville Church, but all that in between, Feas, Big Creek, Little Laurel, Sand Lake, all of, Big Laurel, Parsoner, all those tributaries, and Main Mud, there's no water on those at all. I realized the first thing you're going to say is cost effectiveness, I've heard that term before, because the farms are so big and the land, houses are so spread out, but we'd still like to have water if there is any way. So, what do I need to do?
Well, I'll tell you what, if you want, I'll go with you, and I'll help you, I mean, I have a mother-in-law that's down there too. I have family that lives down on Upper Mud River, and we'll go get signatures, and we'll just, I mean, and I think that's-
Is that what you want?
I think that's the thing to do initially, I think to see who would be willing to take it, you know, who wants it.
I've talked to some folks up there in Old Henry's, the campground up there, I've talked to them and some other people, and just about everybody said, "Yeah, I'd like a tank."
Right. But I think that that's the number one thing, is to find out who wants to take the water, how many people, and then, you know, then you solicit Region 2 and try to get funding for it.
The other thing that we did several years ago was, you know, because they do have some, I think some, I don't know exactly what to have at the dam, there's some kind of water, we had looked at possibly doing some kind of water treatment at the dam, because we were looking at putting a camping area, a camping area with those things that misses before the fella, him to get it hits up there. But we had looked at that before, and not sure, because you've got an abundance of water there, you know, with the lake and things like that, if that might not work, you know, as far as maybe talk, maybe revisiting that idea. And it would also, I think, maybe allow us to get some monies from other sources, as far as, not just from infrastructure available for that, but maybe parks, you know, tourism and things like that. But we, when we looked at it before, we initially went out and was trying to get the Mud River Area Declared State Farm, and talked with several of the people that we need to do there. But I think if you approach it from the end of giving safe water to those people, you know, because that, like you said, they look at the cost per household to put water in, and if you look at it and go at it from both ends, I think it's probably a more doable thing than trying to throw down the whole line at one time and do it that nature. But we don't have any plans right now on our, that I know, to expand the water farther up Mud River, because we did that one, we did the Big Creek, Upper Big Creek expansion and things, and that was with the help of West Town, West Ham. And so, and that was a self-help project, the commission bought the pipe, and they put, they, we had, they had people come and put it in, things of that nature. And, you know, as far as local monies go, we're kind of out of that monies right now for those local projects, and maybe we will have some as we go down the road with it. But I think a project like you're talking about, we need to look at what we can do as far as looking at the numbers nearest to the water supply first, and get the total numbers, because then you've got to have them eventually anyway, for us, when you figure the cost of the project, that's how they do it. But if we can look at particular areas we can get, say we can get a mile at a time, and things of that nature, but getting the total numbers first, and then being able to look at where the numbers are in that stretch, then we can make it more, you know, for people to give you money to develop these things, it makes it easier for them to give you the money if you're doing, if you're getting so many households per mile of inches, or so many feet. And we can also do, if we start getting these money, any monies, which I'm hoping with our natural gas, we'll start getting some more monies, we're hitting now, it's been used more, but we could use that monies to do self-help, like we're saying, and I'm going to talk with the other commissioners about buying, you know, a mile of pipeline, if we can find somebody who'll put in, even people that live in here. And we could, you know, make sure that we get it put in right, and, you know, and we can do things like help with that endeavor, as far as getting the engineering, architectural design, things like that. And when you talk about these big projects like Lower Mud, and the reason I'm saying this is, you know, we're committed to Lower Mud River Project for two funding cycles, so that means that we're trying to get a small cities block grant to finish the phase one of the Lower Mud River Project, and then we're going for the next block grant where we promised to go ahead and complete that project. So, if you're looking for federal monies for the project we're talking about, as far as from the small cities block grant, that would be, you know, that may be yours down the road, but that would be available, because they technically only let you have a small cities block grant money for one project per year. So, until that project's finished, you can't get the other monies, because you still apply for it, and you get in line for it, but until those projects expend that money in those phases, then you can't get any more, you won't be eligible for small cities block grant. But now, we do try for ARC grants and things like that, and other things that Congressman Jenkins, man, had to say there, and I'm, it's really, really good if we can get everybody on board on these projects where we want to go. And that's why I'm saying, if we could look at that project from, look at the total project and see if we can start on each end coming toward it, if we can't do something at the dam itself, that it will generate clean water.
I did some legwork today, and up there at Purlockville Church, where they're ending that project up there, you got all that dam down through there, it's three miles down the, and basically, there's not, there's service buildings up there where some of the people that work on the dam live, there's two of them, but I know of another, that, I don't know how far it is, how deep it is before you find a dwelling out that direction.
Yeah, and if we did anything-
So, it's three miles, just basically-
Well, it makes sense if we could develop a water source at the dam, in conjunction with Lincoln PSD, that that might be the cheapest way to do that, you know, especially if we were talking about providing more recreational opportunities for people up there. And I'm sure that there'd be a lot more development up there, a lot more people living up in there, because that's the whole thing, if you had potable water coming down that Mud River, you know, it's just, it'd be a tremendous asset for you all. I mean, and plus, the value of your place is skyrocketing, I mean, you know, it's just a good thing for the whole county.
And then Joshua taxes.
But if you want, I'd like to, I'll help you, and we'll just get help there and get it in our house.
Once we get these numbers together, I'm sure we can get it to Congressman Jenkins and, you know, they, more than we do, understand the ins and outs of getting monies into those things that we can get done, but I've been impressed so far, you know, with the cooperation we've had with his office and Senator Capito, and of course, Senator Manchin, so, but, you know, we've got to get it on the books first, you know what I mean, get the numbers down so we know what amount of money we're probably looking at, and then we need to look at what's the best way to get that money, the quickest way, because that's the other thing, is you want, as much as we can do locally, the quicker the project goes.
So, we need to be looking at somebody that could do the work locally, and the commission gets funds to buy from.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we've done historically, now we don't have as much money as we did then, but hopefully, as we go through this next fiscal year, we'll be in better shape, and we can do things-
What about rideaways?
That's something that, I think West, Towne West, I mean, people have worked with Towne West Ham, did that, yeah. And you know, you're kind of looking at, if we go up past Johnson Hill, we're looking at kind of the same situation-
You've got to have a tank up there.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, you know, that's quite a bit of expense.
And then they have to be able to supply, I mean, that's because the Towne West Ham will have to be able to supply the people down through there, get water.
Of course, we have worked, you know, we do, they do receive some water from older land plenty now, so they're a little, I think, maybe a little more flexible than what they were, but it does that fiscal grant over there, I think, I don't know the numbers it can talk and learn, you know, but I know that it can take more numbers, but, you know, just like Kevin said, we'd have to look at, you know, have to look at whether, you'd have to look at something, whether you want to use West Virginia American Water's trunk or not, and things like that, you know, so, but, you know, there's, you just have to get the numbers down, then start marrying, and then we all try to say, and figure out how to get it.
I think the first thing is get people, you know, get signatures, find out how many people, you know, get all the numbers down, and go from there, but I think you can start now, I wouldn't start next year.
Like I said, what we do on these, we kind of give a, when we go for a small cities block grant, we give a letter of support for that project, and that's why we spent the support on Lower Mud with his next monies, you know, but, you know, if we got all the information on your guys' project, then to me, that's where you want to go, you know, you want, you want, you want that old thing shovel-ready type stuff, that's a real thing when you go for some of these monies and stuff. So, if we've done all of our homework here and have the information available to Congressman and the senators and things like that, and the governor, then we can, we'll be ready to jump when we have to jump.
There's many different municipalities applying ultimately, but if you do really gather enough evidence and you're able to support your case, you really, you make it to specific agencies, USDA, ARC money as well, but it's really similar to what you guys did with the Mud River, your ducks run her up, and you submit a letter of support.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, I don't think we have anybody else for public comment, so let's go to the discussion, certain possible action. We have Larry Stumpf, the EDA. One was not that big, what else?
Thank you, commissioners, for meeting with us this evening. As it says, I want to go over the latest update from the farmers market, which the EPA's been working on, in conjunction with the County Commission. In May, we met, and we, the board, the rectors of the EPA met, and looked at all the options associated with the farmers market, and felt that it was wise and certainly fiscally responsible that any projects of that sort, we will try to seek outside funding for. Particularly, we'll be looking at the Appalachian Regional Commission, and I've already spoken with someone there, they do have funds available for farmers markets, because there's a huge push on that. We are now armed with a set of first-class drawings, designs, architectural work, engineering work, and so on and so forth, that will help us in that effort. Our follow-up to that was that instead of funding internally such a building, that we would look and see if we still couldn't put a structure in place on the property in Allen Creek that would support seasonal vendors and support them with some good facilities. So, I was urged and told to get bids on a 24-by-48 shelter, we'll call it a pavilion, and I've been doing that. I was also urged to use Lincoln County contractors and Lincoln County suppliers, to spend everything that we can in the county, and I've been able to do that. I contacted eight Lincoln County contractors, sent them a list of materials, two were outside the county. I had two respondents that actually bid, if you want to call it that, on the project, both are great contractors. One, however, took that list and made some adjustments that were extremely valuable, in my view. Visits of the site, took numerous pictures, looked at site work, drainage, tree removal, placement of the building, how the customers would be served, and so on and so forth. And that particular contractor that we're recommending for the job was Andy Williamson. He did a great job, and his price on that, for all the site work, materials, and labor to construct a 24-by-48 building that's superior in strength and in stability, twice the concrete for the poles, and the poles on eight-foot centers, not 10. Very good, very good points he brought up. The total cost on that would be $16,705. That would be, it'd be ready to go. So, I'm asking the commission that we go from our regular structure to $16,705.
So, you're going to need a drawdown request for that amount?
Yes, sir.
You have a motion for a drawdown request?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you can announce, motion carries.
Larry, do you have anything to say with Star?
He said he can begin right away, so I thought that was good. As far as drawdowns, also, I mentioned the designs earlier, and we've been discussing how that ends with Thrasher Group that did the engineering, architectural studies, and what have you, on the original structure, and I have the final drawdowns on that, as well as some advertisement for the sealed bid process. If y'all want that individually, I've got copies that I can give to you, and I can even, one of them here has the total on it. That's it for me.
So, that amount where Thrasher is paid?
They're done. Once you have, the first one finished with Thrasher, they went ahead and paid Terracom, that was the geotechnical service, which is the second building there, they supplied a copy of their check where they'd done that. And the other one is a invoice that may have already been paid, that was presented where we ran the legal act for the sealed bid process. That's it, and that'll be done. So, there'll be no more requests.
We need a drawdown request for that, $832.80. Do you have a motion for that?
How's that, man?
You have further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you can announce, motion carries. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, commissioners, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, we have Josh Brumfield, assessor, reminder, request for funding for a part-time position for Government Day. Received an email from Josh Brumfield, assessor, reminding us that Government Day for the next year, or I should say, the new fiscal year, will need part-time help, a part-time position, and we wanted to see what the feeling was from the commission, as far as if we wanted to invest, or I should say, provide that part-time position. I think last year, the part-time position was, it was $12,000 for that part-time position, and I've talked to the assessor, and I think from my, me talking with him, I think that we could, he's asking the commission do it for 10, and that he could take care of the rest, and he said that he would take care of the finances, and with all the copiers and printers and all that stuff. So, he's asking the commission for $10,000, and this will continue with Government Day for this kind of fiscal year.
So, is this a reminder to us to be-
It is a reminder, if we would like to move on that tonight, we can, and this would make sure that Government Day continues through July, and the reason for that, I thought that, you know, it would be, you know, that we would be able- be able to wait until after June, but the way July falls, July falls, you know, July the first and July the second, July the first is a Monday, July the second is a Thursday, and, you know, you would have Government Day on a Wednesday and a Thursday, and then we would have a commission meeting Thursday night.
That's the fourth, right?
Yeah, Thursday, Thursday, yeah. I thought the second is the second.
Second.
So...
So Mary could put it on the agenda, on Tuesday, when she puts the agenda out, that we could, because I think we decided last time to wait and see exactly when our carry order is going to be. So at the end of the month, we'll know exactly how much we're going to get back from all the offices for a carry order. And we could go ahead and put it on there and...
We could do, yeah, we could do, what I'm saying is Government Day, that particular week would be...
You have Government Day on Wednesday, and your commission meeting is on Thursday.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that week...
So I won't have a part-time worker for that one. The money will run out on that Wednesday when we're supposed to be at Harrah's. And you guys won't have a meeting for that next day, Thursday.
How much expenses or telephone line over there?
I don't know the answer to that.
And the telephone company, their quarters, I mean, which is, which is the cheapest way to do it?
Robbie's been working on that. There's been some issues with, we were over there yesterday for a couple hours working with the Wi-Fi and internet connection. There's been new service put in by the library commission, so there's some issues with getting access to that. But I think the bottom line is, is we could get our own internet service, but what we want to do is be able to use ours, and we don't have to pay for it. A phone, I think our, I'm not sure what a phone costs, I would imagine anywhere from $60 to $90 a month. We need two lines, one for a fax, and I talked to the librarian, and I think the last time that they used Government Day over there, which had been several years ago, they shared a phone, and it was a hassle, and so...
Well, I think, I think we need our, I would just question you, as far as putting the infrastructure in there, is it...
Well, I've already, I've already purchased from when we had the Allen Creek office there on the side of the gas station. We already have, I purchased the fax machines, some of the furniture I had already purchased. So we don't have to buy any of that, we can just get some storage here. And really, what we're waiting on now is just to know whether or not we want to be able to service the office.
I think we voted last time to go ahead and move forward with whatever you all needed to get it going over there, didn't we not?
Yeah, I guess the only standing issue is, is it's, I don't know how much effort you want me to put into Allen Creek office if, because there's going to be some money involved in getting the phone and, you know, getting, possibly have to get our own Wi-Fi. And then if I don't get a part-time employee after June 30th, then we deal all this just for two weeks of service.
Does a sheriff use that stuff in his office? I mean, over there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the two girls work side by side. I mean, I bought all that stuff with my, some of my PVC money when we first established the office over there.
That's what I'm saying, even if you weren't over there, the sheriff would be there. You see what I'm saying, we need to have that stuff in there, so.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you won't be, you understand what I'm saying, but I mean, I just don't want to, you know, if there's ways to get things done and get things started, we need to do, do that. I mean, and that's what I thought we decided at the last meeting, and you know what I'm saying?
I just want to be upfront and clear with the commission that if I don't have a part-time employee, I'm not going to be able to service that.
Well, I appreciate that, because I think that's something that, you know, we all have to decide on what we can and can't do, you know, and as, as I understand, and we really haven't decided, and that puts you in limbo as far as from your end of it. Of course, I think, you know, we may have different ideas as far as service and what can or can't be done with what budgets we have available to us now, and that's what we're trying to work through right now.
Fine, I respect that, but I just, like I said, I wanted to be upfront and clear, didn't want to be reactive, and I made myself clear, I think, in the email I sent you guys. You know, I'm happy, I think Government Day's a great service. I'm happy to do it. It's just, you know, during our first budget meeting, we didn't think we were going to be doing Government Day next year. And the commission, you know, clearly said that we just, we're not going to do that service. And, you know, my girl that provides that service, you know, that budget runs out on June 30th.
I understand.
So...
You know, I mean, but anyway, I just, you know, I talked to Mr. Brumfield, and I know that we funded, it was $12,000 last year. And I talked to, I talked to you about, you know, if we pick up $10,000 and then you take anything, and then you're willing to...
We'll go to the bank on that, that's not a big deal. I'm more than willing to try to help. I like the service, I think it's good for the people.
But I, I mean, I have no problem in waiting for the person, but I understand what you say about that one day over there we're talking about. But I, you know, I kind of feel like Mr. Harrah says, if we just, we'll vote on it next time, you'll let me, you know what I mean?
That's fine.
If that's all right with the rest of the commission.
That's fine, that's fine.
All right.
We don't have any unfinished business? We have new business. Make sure that you make note on there that we are not going to be reappointing Allen Creek on that, we are going to advertise the Lincoln PSD position that is in Mr. Brumfield.
But if he applies, he could be reappointed.
Well, of course he could.
Okay, just making sure.
But we want to, I think it's, it's consistent with what we've been doing, we've been advertising all board positions. So let's make sure we make that change. You see anything else, if you have any questions or comments, concerns about? If not, I would like a motion to approve the new business. So, any further discussion?
Could I have one question?
Of course.
The Yawkey Tower matter, to authorize the president and Mr. Holder to enter into an agreement to transfer real estate, is this a new site? Is this change?
The, the site, the initial site that he was looking at, let me go ahead and get this out of the way first. There's a motion, a second discussion.
Sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If that being unanimous, motion carries. But, oh, um, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, there was a, there was an initial site, and, and I think that the way that I guess things were working out, I think that he, Alan Holder moved, was looking at another location, H&amp;E Energy, I think that they have, are going to actually give the county commission that piece of property so that we can put the tower there. So I, I think that that would eliminate a, like a dollar lease for 25 years, and that's what that's about.
I think they're right, just going to do it to a very...
But it's a slightly different location.
Yeah, it's, it's from this hill to this hill.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a difference. Listen, if, any, any further discussion, open discussion, if you don't, I'll make motion that we adjourn until or until I meet. I'll say, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.